We're live. We're live. Thank you. Welcome to the City of Marshalltown, City Hall Council Chambers, second floor. Today's date is August 27, 2018, and the time is 5:30 PM. We start with a notice to the public that the mayor and council welcome comments from the public during discussion of any of the agenda items. You are required to step to the microphone, identify yourself by name and address for the record, and limit remarks to three minutes or less so others may speak. Speak clearly and direct the comments to the mayor and city council, not to any councilor specifically. It's at the discussion of the mayor and council to respond to specific questions or comments, or to have staff respond during the meeting. Since we've been called to order, we'll go on to the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand for those who are able.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Lamer?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Weren?
Here.
Cahill?
Here.
Goudy?
Here.
Hoop?
Here.
Very good. Full house. We are on to the mayor council and administrative comments, starting with an award for years of service. Chief Tupper?
Mike Tupper, Marshalltown Police Department. It's my honor and privilege to have Stephen Sheets here tonight. Officer Sheets is celebrating five years of service with the City of Marshalltown. He currently works on our overnight patrol unit and is also a member of our department tactical team. Stephen and I were chatting a little bit, waiting for the meeting, and he mentioned one of our supervisors said, "Five years? Seems like longer than that." We can take that as a positive thing because Stephen's performance as a professional and his maturity as a police officer far exceed five years of experience. He operates like he's a 20-year veteran. He's one of the best police officers that we have, does an outstanding job. I've been really impressed with Stephen's initiative, his hard work. He's a cool cucumber. Anybody watch the movie Cool Hand Luke? I'm kind of old age myself, but he reminds me of Luke. He's just cool, even tempered, and he works really well with the public regardless of circumstance and situations. So, we're very lucky to have Stephen on our police department. He's a rising star in the police department, and I want to congratulate you, Stephen, on five years of service.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Very good. Do any of the council members or the administrator have any comments?
I do, Your Honor. So, I had a conversation with a member of the public last week about the efforts of individuals through this Facebook group that I've been a part of since pretty much -- I've at least been a part of the group, which doesn't say anything about my individual efforts, but there's a group on Facebook called Marshalltown Tornado Relief Page. It started as a different -- with a different name, but as the relief efforts became less urgent, now it's called Disaster -- or Tornado Relief Page. There are almost 5,000 members, and the brains behind it have worked tirelessly to connect people from all over the place. They're currently doing a blanket drive for those who aren't able to do much physical labor, so there are a lot of people who are just not able to do the heavy lifting and wanted to help in some way. So, there's a blanket drive going on until -- it says Monday, October 1st. So, I wanted to let the public know that. I also think this is a big part of why we are considered to be so far ahead in our recovery efforts here in Marshalltown, and I know there's a ton of work left to be done. There is a ton of work still going on through this group, individuals connecting with other individuals. So, I just think it says a lot about our community, and I want to give personal thank -- a personal thank you to the people who keep this page going and who have helped others through this way to connect. So, they're all volunteers, and it's been really a wonderful thing for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I do. I didn't -- sorry. I didn't get to you early enough, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to pull number three off of the consent agenda, just because I want to -- I need to know the process. And it isn't that I'm opposed to that, but that's the only item that has the process in it. So, I would just like to pull it so that we can talk about the process, if we could, please.
We can do that. Anyone else? I'd like to say it's sure comfortable to be back here. I went to the library today to get some training, and they admitted that they miss all the city folks that have been camped out there for the last several weeks. So, it was nice of them to accommodate everybody, and we apparently made good people to be at the library. Well, let's go on to item F, the consent agenda, then, is their motion to approve it as edited without item number three in it.
I'm in for approval. Second.
Roll call, please.
Martin?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Very good. Carrie, Madam Secretary, would you read those items?
Approve minutes of August 13th. Approve the bill list in the amount of $1,404,074.64. Resolution approving contracts signed by the mayor pursuant to the declaration of state of public emergency beginning July 19. Resolution modifying the budget for the police and fire building project to include sidewalks and landscaping. Resolution approving changes to the fiscal year 2019 capital improvement plan to allow for vehicle purchases. Approve alcohol license renewals, Old Timers Tavern, Hy-Vee Drug Store, Fiddle and Whistle Pub, Quick Star 394, Zomora Fresh Market, and Aldi.
Thank you. On to item G, then, motions. The first one is for the Oktoberfest liquor license at the fairgrounds.
Please consider item number three before we move on.
Oh, okay. Let's back up to item number three that was skipped, and that is the civil service new hire list parking enforcement.
I would move for approval.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes. I would -- the process of putting together a new hire list for any job in the city is the -- is handled by the Civil Service Commission. Is that correct?
There are certain positions which are deemed to be civil service positions of the city. Generally, management positions are not. However, in the police and fire department, there's exceptions to that as their civil service departments.
Okay. When -- who picks the tests, and where do the tests come from?
The department head usually makes a recommendation to the Civil Service Commission, and the Civil Service Commission then approves the process to be used.
You lost me. So, the tests come from the departments?
Yeah, the department. It depends on the type of position. I think specifically with this position, Chief Tupper can tell you exactly what was done here for this one, as it was the police department that set up the process and made the recommendation to the Civil Service Commission as to the process used on this position.
Do we use an outside firm to provide the questions, or do we do that?
I was going to say, I defer to Chief Tupper to tell you exactly what happened on this one, as I don't have the specifics.
Well, as a general rule for everybody.
It's going to vary by position, by department, and so there's -- it's not a one rule fits everything.
For this particular process, it was a fairly simple process. It's not a complex position. So, Captain Brian Batterston reviewed the job description, and they ended up coming up with a basic aptitude test that they thought was relevant to the type of work that's being performed. And then, there was an interview panel made up of department staff and, I think, our HR director.
So, may I have a little latitude here, Mr. Mayor?
You may.
You just appointed a sergeant. Would that process be different than this process?
Yeah, all of the processes that we use for various positions can be a little bit different.
Okay.
We just went through a process to find a detective. That's not a civil service process, so that process would look a little bit different from a civil service process.
Okay. But normally, you as the department head gets to review the tests that are being used and help put the questions together so that it matches the job description?
Yeah.
Okay.
The department director is allowed to make recommendations about what the process should look like.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. That's what I needed. Thank you, sir.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Public comment? Roll call.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Okay. Carrie, on to motions G1, Oktoberfest liquor license at fairgrounds.
Good evening. I'm Mary Lee Weatherman. I'm president of Oktoberfest this year.
Dwayne Dixon, Vice President.
If you have any questions, we'd be glad to answer them.
I have my standard question that I ask each time one of these go out, that this Oktoberfest liquor license, will you have a fenced area, or will you just allow people to walk all over the fairgrounds, all over the east side of town? What's the -- what would be the rule here?
We are going to be at the fairgrounds this year because of the devastation downtown. The fairgrounds is completely fenced, but we will have -- so, the fences on the west side will be our barricade. There will be -- the carnival will be on the west side of the fence, and there will be no alcohol on that side, and then, nothing beyond the buildings and/or barns at the fairgrounds, if you're familiar with that area.
Actually, if you can bring up like a Google map of the fairgrounds.
I can't bring anything up from here, so -- because you have to type in stuff and everything.
So, I can go here?
If you certainly want to, I don't have the ability to do that.
Can you tell us where the parade will go? What the?
Actually, the parade will be on Olive Street this year. It's going to start at Seventh Avenue at the First Baptist Church, except for the high school bands, and the bands will be fed in from the high school, but they'll, you know, come down Olive, and then, it will go to Seventeenth Avenue, just in front of Packaging Corporation, so that people can get off their floats and load their buses and all of those things.
Thank you.
So, there'll be lots of room at the fairgrounds. Bring your lawn chairs. And we are so thankful that the First Baptist Church is allowing us to use their parking lot, and then, Seventh Avenue will have closed too, to feed the floats through.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Can you talk about a little bit of the, like, the dates and the hours of the activities at the fairgrounds, especially this, where the liquor license will be?
Alcohol sales will be Friday night from 5:00 to 10:00 PM, and then, again, on Saturday from 1:00 until 11:00. Thursday night's all about kids, no alcohol sales at that point. Starts at 5:00 PM, same as we did downtown, big wheel races, hoop shoot. There won't be -- the kids' fund run has moved to Saturday along with the adult fund run, and it's all going to be combined. Well, there'll be a quarter mile run, a half mile run, and a full mile run for kids and/or adults, and will include color. So, like last year, we tossed color all over people, and they just seem to love it. That's what we're going to do again this year, inside the fairgrounds.
Any other questions or suggestions, comments? Public comment? Roll call.
Can you -- well, first, can you describe what we're looking at and where it will be?
The fairgrounds right here, basically, the -- this is South 12th Avenue and Olive Street. The fairgrounds that we're looking at will basically include this portion of it within the -- or surrounding the buildings. We're going to use the west side fence for the barricade and then put the carnival over here in the north corner by the, what's considered the Pitts parking area. So, we'll have the physical fence as our barricade between the carnival and the rest of the area.
And then, the back part with the buildings will have barricades, and we have three-foot signs on canvas this year that will say, "No alcohol beyond this point."
Thank you.
And where will parking be? Is that that lower?
Parking will be
Below the carnival?
The southern -- or southern end of Main Park or of that southern field, and then, to the east side of the fairgrounds itself.
There's more over there. Okay.
Will there be races that Friday evening?
No, there's no races scheduled for that evening or weekend.
Thanks for volunteering. I would entertain a motion to approve it.
So, move.
Second.
Second.
That goes to Martin. Let's call the roll.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Very good. Carrie unanimously on to reports.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for volunteering. It's a great event. Brings people into town. Time for reports, and the first one is the Convention and Visitors Bureau with Director Val Ruff.
Good evening. Val Ruff, Marshalltown Convention and Visitors Bureau, giving an update. We're a few weeks behind because I was supposed to do this a while back, but due to our certain circumstances that we have now. So, I just want to say that today, as I stand before the city council, I know that we're all kind of in a different frame of mind, and our landscape has forever been changed, and our goals feel more personal and more community-centric. So, despite the July 19 tornado and the current situation with the hotels overflowing and people looking for extended stay because our community is full of workers, construction workers, and people are -- they're going to be here for quite some time. So, the hotel situation looks a little bit different, as it would have been had I done this a few weeks ago. So, I'm not going to get into the doom and gloom, but I do want to let you know that our fiscal year ended in June, and we were about $1,000 less than fiscal year 2013-14. So, our income, our revenue was $276,581. So, it's pretty -- I kind of, when I talk about it in conversation, we kind of say pre-alliant. So, we give alliant a lot of, you know, recognition for the great boost in our economy. So, I just want to say that, and optimistically, the CVB Board passed a new fiscal budget for this next fiscal year of $300,000, and Bowman and Miller just completed our annual report, our annual audit, and we did get a copy of that to the city, so that's available if anybody would like to see it, and I could email it as well if you'd like to take a look at it. So, I'm just going to do a quick overview of some -- recap of some numbers that I think might be of interest to you. So, in fiscal year 1718, we were -- that -- these are all things that we're aware of, so I'm just going to preface it with that. So, we're aware of 32 meetings and conventions that amounted to about 2,600 people. We had 56 sporting events and tournaments that resulted in over 20,000 attendees. So, just kind of to give you the travel and tourism economic impact figures, if we were just to take that 23,000 attendees, guests, folks, visitors to the community, and we were to use the $142.17 if you stay overnight, that would amount to about $1.7 million just in about 20,000 visitors to our community. So, that's just kind of a quick overview, but that does just kind of show the importance of tourism and that we are definitely an economic driver. So, along with those numbers, we -- Shawna was able to package up about 1,500 welcome bags to our visitors. We, Marshalltown and the Marshalltown area, hosted 16 annual events, and that resulted in about 50,000 visitors. And so, like, the Mid-Iowa Antique Power Show is one that I always like to highlight because that's a three-day event that takes place out at the Sheriff's Complex, and that's a kind of a hands-on workshop. It brings in about 3,000 participants, but one of the things I just wanted to share that's kind of fun when you're working with people to put these three-day events together, they're very passionate about the work that they do. So, a gentleman took -- went out into the -- to the -- where the cars are parked and took pictures of license plates of where some of these folks were from, so I just wanted to share this with you. Some are from Nebraska, Oklahoma, South Dakota, California, Wisconsin, Texas, Oklahoma, and there's even someone from Alaska, down here in the middle of August, or the first of August. So, I just wanted to share that with you. And then, also, you know, we're very supportive of, like, Oktoberfest. We want to thank them for taking the initiative to move that event. I know that some of us really love it in the downtown, but we're -- rather than have it canceled, I'd rather have it at least, and so, I just want to say we're thankful that they were able to do that, and we helped promote that as well. In addition, we have 14 grants in that fiscal year that allowed us to support groups to meet in the middle. That's kind of our logo or tagline, encouraging folks to meet in the middle, so we were able to help them choose Marshalltown. And then, I want to jump into a little bit of our marketing. We have about a $40,000 marketing budget, and we use that to invite and promote Marshalltown as a destination. That's at a state, a regional, and a local level. One of the things that I have a radio show that I do on KFJB on Thursday mornings, and it's called Experience Marshalltown, and I like to host events that are coming up. I think we've had -- Mary Lee was on there with me, and we talk about Oktoberfest, and then, anything that's coming up, attractions, points of interest, different things like that. So, it's kind of a fun radio spot, and a lot of people get a kick out of it, I guess. I hear that anyway. Also, I want to encourage folks to invite, if you're in a social organization or you belong to a group, I would just say that our Marshalltonians, let's really think about how we can bring meetings and conventions here to the community as a whole, because that's what's going to help us bounce back from our -- in our recovery efforts, continuing to pump money into our economy. So, I would just encourage you to do that. That kind of encourages the Chamber of Commerce, think local, invite people to think about using local, stay local, shop local, and not only that, but to attend local events. You know, we have a lot of social offerings, so working with Vision Marshalltown on that initiative to really get the word out. So, we just want to continue to push that forward. Something new in our arsenal is we have Constant Contact. I believe that all of you as city council members are on that. It's just kind of an update that says, from the Convention and Visitors Bureau, who's coming to town? The numbers of people that are coming to town, that's very helpful to the restaurants and the attractions so that they can staff accordingly if we got a big group coming in town. It also gives us an opportunity, which I know Joe likes, if we can put things on the marquee that welcome these groups to our community, because it's kind of a good feel-good for them. So, that's something that we have started doing recently. A couple of things I just want to mention about some of our strategic initiatives for the Convention and Visitors Bureau is to continue to build those relationship and partnerships in the community. One of them, we did this last year with the Central Iowa Fair and KIX 101. What we did is we partnered to bring in a popular country artist named Jason Pritchett, and it resulted in about 400 extra -- 400 people attending that concert at the Central Iowa Fair. So, even though we're not the Jones County Fair, but we're kind of working towards kind of that goal, is to, you know, bring in those popular music entertainment venues to help bring people to promote that. The other thing that we're really excited, and we're getting ready to kick this off here real soon, is a restaurant week. We're in conjunction with the Central Business District, working with Jenny, and also working with the Chamber of Commerce, Lynn, and then, the Convention and Visitors Bureau, then. We're also working with Main Street Iowa, the Restaurant Association, and Travel Iowa to promote Restaurant Week here in Marshalltown in the downtown and also in the entire community. So, we'll be really pushing out, trying to get people to participate in that, so folks will go out and eat out and dine local. Something else that we just recently did with the Historical Society of Marshall County is there was a Lincoln Highway Motor Tour group. There was about 28 of them and came in to the Maori Irvine Mansion, and they came along the highway, or the Lincoln Highway route, and they spent some time at the mansion, and we were trying to decide what we should serve them for lunch, and so, I called Sandy Short and I said, "Hey, would you work with us on providing them an iconic maid right?" And she said, "Absolutely." So, we provided a maid rights and a couple of sides, and they had a great time here. The other thing is a partnership that started when Ann Selnos was here, and we do the Monarchs and Milkweed for the Marshalltown area. It's a really fun partnership with Park and Rec, Marshall County Conservation, and the CVB, and we promote educational awareness and programming on pollinators and monarchs and how you can plant a garden and all that good stuff, because I know we all want to put butterfly bush out in our yard. So, that takes place September 15th. And the other thing we're working with, just got asked here by Steve Muntz, MIC-TV and MCC, is to start capturing stories for a documentary of -- because everybody has their own tornado story. And I'm sure if you -- we were to sit around here and it wasn't so, you know, you start getting in meetings and everybody has a story. So, they think it's important that we start capturing some of those stories for a documentary, so I'll be working with Steve Muntz on that. The other thing, just really quick, I just want to mention that I've been working on the -- working with the Wayfinding Steering Committee serving on that and with Bolton and Mink, and something that's kind of come out of that, that I've been working with them on personally from the Convention and Visitors Bureau standpoint, is to work on a new tear-off map for visitors. And so, it's kind of exciting because it will have the same kind of look and feel as all the other wayfinding that the city is working on, and being color-coded and things like that, and so, I'm looking forward to getting a new comprehensive visitors map for our visitors that come to town, even though I know we all have a phone. Every once in a while, it's nice to have a piece of paper and someone can draw on it for you. So, in wrapping up, I just want to share one opportunity that I'm pretty proud to share that I was a -- got to be a part of in this whole recovery effort and the disaster is that there's a veteran group called Team Rubicon, and while they were here, I was asked if I could help coordinate their morning meals, because most of their other meals were coordinated, and I said, "We'd be glad to do that." So, I kind of got to know some of those folks, and as I was sitting there one day in the office, I said to myself, "You know, we are the home of the Iowa Veterans Home. There's -- we've got to figure out how to get these -- this Team Rubicon that's been here volunteering and helping with the disaster recovery, how can we get them out to the Iowa Veterans Home to have dinner with the veterans?" And it took oh, about four or five days, but we figured it out. I had reached out to a couple individuals in the community that are good friends, and we were able to pool our money together and provide them. I think there was 32 of them, maybe, and so, they got to go out to the Veterans Home and have a meal, and it was on Friday, July 27, and Dex Walker was able to help me coordinate that, and he just wanted me to share the story, is that when the Team Rubicon came in there, you know, they're all dressed clean, ready to go have dinner, and they get in line in the cafeteria, and all the Iowa veterans stepped back from the dining line where they were in line to get their food and let them all go through before. So, I thought that was very cool. We personally, as a family, were able to sneak out there and meet some of them personally, and so, that was a pretty priceless experience for me. So, that's all I have. If you have any questions, I'm glad to answer anything.
No questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Very good report. That Team Rubicon was really phenomenal. Who knew? Had never heard of them. There are 1.2 million of the people that are veterans who do this, and they go to all sorts of disasters all over the country. Very helpful. Thank you. Okay. Let's go to our other report tonight with the Marshalltown Water Works.
I don't know whose classes these are.
I'm Ken Vincent, the chairman of the Water Works Board of Trustees. When I retired about a year and a half ago, I never thought I'd be coming back here to address the council, but circumstances have kind of changed a little bit, so I'm here to give you a report. Two parts to it. I'd like to tell you just a little bit about the storm damage that we experienced. We're very, very fortunate that we had very, very little compared to what other people had in town. It's just horrible what happened to a lot of other people and other businesses and so forth, but we had, we say, no major damage in any of our facilities. The water treatment plant and the well field, there were no damage reports out there. We did have some sustained damage at the office building, but it was very minor. Lost an air conditioner on the roof, had some roof damage, some windows, things like that, but that's all replaced. We also had a small building up there that we had storage of material and some equipment, and it was destroyed, so that will be replaced. But we were very fortunate that we didn't have anything other than that. We were out of power, utility power, for about three days. We were out of power, utility power, for about three days. But we did bring in a small generator and got some of the essential services back that we needed. And we did transfer one of our employees down to the plant, which had phone service. We didn't have phone service, so we were able to transfer the employee down there, and she answered the phone and got the service orders out for the people that needed, needed service and assistance. One of the things that we're kind of proud of is we had installed a brand-new, large electric generator last year as a part of our rehab program. We rehabbed both of the clarifiers, updated the equipment in there. We installed a new 2-million-gallon storage tank and upgraded our facilities about a half-million-gallon storage, and put the generator in. Without the generator, we possibly could have lost water service when we lost utility power. We only lost it for about a day, a little over a day. And maybe Leon could tell better what would have happened, but I, I don't know if we would have lost water in a day, but we certainly would have lost a lot of pressure, and we probably would have had some rationing going on too. So we're very fortunate that we had that, that in place. The other thing is, we had no damage. Well, I should take that back. We had one spot on 15th Street and Summit where a tree had grown into a water main, and when it was uprooted by the tornado, it damaged the water main. And that was the only, only sustain of the mains that we can attribute to the tornado. No, no other damage was experienced. I have to say that our disaster recovery plan went fairly well. We're making some enhancements on that, especially if we lose power and phone service at the office. We'll make, make some changes there and try to make that service better. One of the things that kind of bugged me was that, and I've, I've said this, it's been in the paper before, but contrary to social media rumors, we never lost water service. The quality, it was never compromised. But there was that rumor floating around that you got to boil your water, and that's just damaging to the, to the public's confidence. And it just stuck with me that somebody had to put that out there, unverified that they did that, but we never had anything like that take place. I'll get to the CEO, General Manager of Search. Our search was kind of slowed by the tornado, by a couple of weeks. We had intended to have a lot of things in place, especially the interviews and so forth. But we have placed the job opening and the job description on the websites of three different places. Our own website, website of the Iowa Association of Municipal Utilities, and then the website of the Iowa section of the American Water Works Association. And I'm proud to say that Leon has been most helpful in providing some of the information on where we should be looking for applicants, where we should be looking for information about how to conduct an interview. It's been many, many years since I've conducted an interview before I hired anybody. But hopefully, we're going to lean on Leon with his experience a little bit more in the, in the future here. The three directors that we have are doing an excellent job. We have a Director of Water Production. He's fairly new. He's an older gentleman. We have a Director of Distribution. He's a younger fellow, and he's fairly new. They were hired about the same time, so they've been there about a year. However, Steve Sincox had done such a great job of keeping these guys informed, up-to-date on all the projects, all the different things that he had going on in management and administering the Water Department, that it's made their job much easier. We are not, as trustees, managing this on a day-to-day basis. The employees are doing it. That includes the office staff, the crews that work on the distribution system, the plant operators, and then, of course, the three, three directors. So we're very fortunate that we have those three. And the third one I should mention, Pat Willey. She's been there. She's the Finance Director. She's been there for many years. She knows her, knows her stuff. So a lot of the things that Steve was, was doing have fallen to those people, and then some to the trustees. Like, I'm here tonight, which I shouldn't be. Steve should be here, but unfortunately, he's not here. I guess that's about it. I will say that Steve was an exceptional individual. He was a great administrator, a great manager for us and the city. He was starting to develop into a leader, you know, leadership roles in the community. And with all that in mind, I, I now understand that he's probably, he was probably even a better father and a family man. So he's a great, it's a great loss, but we are managing, and we hope we can find another person that would fill those great big shoes. Any questions for me?
Thanks. Always fun to have you back, Ken.
Well, maybe not for long. Get somebody hired.
Let's go on to item I, Resolutions. And would you read the first one, Adam Spector?
Resolution authorizing the purchase of vehicles for multiple city departments.
I move for approval, Your Honor.
Second. Discussion?
Yes. I was, I asked last week, last meeting, if we approved a whole list of 12 or 14 vehicles to be sold. But we didn't buy that many new ones, so. And you said that you were going to provide us with a list of what those vehicles were and where they were at, but we didn't get that either.
Yes, I did provide that to you, I believe, the day after in an update that I sent to all of you.
Really?
And so, yes. So part of the reason this isn't all the vehicles is because there were three in Michelle's department that were ordered right away. One fire department vehicle that was ordered at the last meeting, and the police department is going to be ordering some additional vehicles as we go here, replacing those. So there was a bid that was set out for engineering, the remaining housing, and then Parks and Rec, and that's what's here on the agenda tonight. So we've, we've been moving as quickly as we could with what we could in terms of replacement.
Any other questions or suggestions?
Why does the engineering department?
Any public comment?
Roll call, please.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weirin?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Very good. That carried as well. Would you read the next resolution, please?
Resolution adopting a debris management plan.
Any motion to approve?
I move second.
Discussion?
Counselors of the republic?
I read you that thing, and what a waste.
The, this, this is a requirement for us to have.
It'll put you to sleep.
Yeah. And, but I will say, as we were going through the template and putting this together, I would say that I was surprised at how much we did correctly in the weeks following the tornado without having an approved plan. And so we sort of followed a plan that we, we didn't already have.
I understand, Jessica, that this plan is basically really filled in and needed for any FEMA consideration. Is that correct?
I, I, that was what we were told, that on the public assistance side, if we were to be declared a, get a federal declaration there, that we would need to have an approved debris management plan.
And I also note that it's quite detailed, to the nth degree.
It is. It took the efforts of Justin Nickel and Deputy Chief Chris Cross and the Fire Department and myself to, to, I'll have eyes on it, to get it together to the point where it's in a final draft before you today.
By the way, the, every member of Congress, US Congress from Iowa, has written a letter to the President asking him to speed up the process and give us the grant. So they've been very helpful to us. Any other questions or public comment? If not, let's call the roll.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weirin?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Carry it again. Next resolution, please.
Resolution terminating the civil emergency issued on July 19.
Move to approve. Second, Your Honor.
Discussion or questions? Comment? A roll call.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weirin?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Carry it again. Next resolution, please.
Resolution authorizing the acceptance of community development block grant funds for housing rehabilitation and rental assistance.
Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Michelle Spontheimer, Housing Community Development Director. We have been, since the tornado, have been in communication with Iowa Economic Development Authority about opportunities for funding that can assist with some of our housing needs. So we are looking to request some funding that, from them, to help with some rehabilitation of homes and repair, as well as possibly some rental or deposit type of assistance. And so we're not certain exactly how much or what that might look like, but we're in those conversations with them and hope to formalize some requests and acceptance of funds with them soon. So hopefully, we'll have more information on that, and we really appreciate the state coming forward to try to find ways within their resources under the community development block grant to do that. We will be looking to partner with the Region Six Planning Commission, the Local Housing Trust Fund, to do some of that administration.
Thank you. Any questions or?
So there isn't a dollar amount here. We're just, we're applying for a grant? Is that, is that right? So why are we accepting the grant if we haven't applied for it yet?
Um, it's not, there's not a traditional grant application form that we see with most of their programming. It's called under kind of their urgent need. And so the process is slightly different in that acceptance, so we need to submit a formal letter to them to, to move that forward and allow for that acceptance. And so we're, it, it's not its normal process where an application is announced and you apply and submit, and then you're awarded. The anticipation is that they do have funding available and that we will be seeing an acceptance that comes forward.
So we're sending a letter to accept the money that they haven't, that we haven't applied for yet?
We're, we're basically, this is to?
It's a combination.
Yeah. So it's, it's, it's basically, this is us applying for funds in an amount to be determined. We didn't want to put in a dollar amount and then limit ourselves by what that dollar amount was if there were to be further resources that would be available. And so this is basically authorizing that we can accept a community development block grant for housing, housing rehab and rental assistance when it's applied for. All we have to do is submit the application. This comes under their disaster housing pot, which is not a competitive pot of money.
Right.
Okay.
It is a little bit different than our normal, our normal way of doing things, but it was, it was approached to the city that this is something that they felt was still going to be available to us, and, and we certainly want to take advantage of that for our residents.
Thank you.
Thank you. Public, public comment?
Anna Wolvers, 213, Thomas Strive. Just a question, would that also cover, like, hotel stays in the winter as their houses are being rebuilt?
And for the TV viewers, the answer is, we don't know yet. Okay, if there's no more public comment, let's call the roll on this one.
Martin?
Yes.
Weirin?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Carry it. Very good, thank you. On to resolution number five.
Resolution amending the membership of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board and abolishing the Coliseum Commission.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Discussion? Public comment? Call the roll.
Weirin?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Very good. Carry it. On to item number six, which is a public hearing relating to the JAG grant. So let's reflect that the public hearing is open at 6:15 PM. Were any written comments received by the clerk?
There were no written comments received by the clerk.
Are there any public comments? Actually, we probably ought to go to staff review first, and then?
We change the process to that.
Okay. Any public comments? Okay, staff review, please.
You should have had a memo in your packet. This is an annual grant award that we received from the federal government. This year, the grant, the total grant award is $20,000, $20,765, and we split that 50/50 with the Marshall County Sheriff's Office. So the city police department is proposing that we use our $10,382.50 to purchase some new technology in the police department. It's basically a, it's called a Throwbot. It's a robot that you can throw into a building, and it has cameras on all sides, and we can move it around, control it, and capture pictures and video, and have real-time intelligence of what might be going on in that, in that situation, without having to insert police officers and jeopardize safety. So it's a useful piece of equipment that we wouldn't normally be able to purchase under general fund expenditures, and staff recommends that we use our portion of the grant money to purchase this new equipment.
I'd like to borrow it for one of the dogs in our neighborhood.
Here was a question from the audience. Ann, did you have your hand up?
Well, I was just going to do a public comment whenever you've done it in general. But thank you for noticing.
Okay, okay.
Are you seeing that, Ann? Okay.
Again, Anna Wolvers, 213, Thomas Strive, Marshalltown. I want to do a huge thank you shout-out to those that put together the benefit this past weekend. We had a great turnout, and people showed up. I did watch the August 13 notes, and I know there was a limited discussion on maybe a dollar amount for future artwork at the Police and Fire Department. And I know I've heard some rumblings in the community, especially with the state of people living in motels, or house damage, or homeless. Is that the best use of our tax dollars? And I've also put out a picture. I'm the proud owner of this right now, and I think it would be awesome to put practical artwork like this that united us and is keeping us strong through this and the historic event to eventually go somewhere like the Police Department. That would not cost $55,000 and would keep us strong. So if we wanted to reuse that graffiti wall for others, then we would still have this in the community. So just, I guess, asking you to dig deep when you consider that conversation in the future. That's a lot of money. Average hotel, about $65 a night would cover 846 hotel nights for that same $55,000. And you can also, you know, promote local artists and keep our strong unity together. So that's something I would ask you to consider when that discussion comes up again, especially post-tornado. I know it may not have been as big of a deal pre-tornado, but something to consider for our, our people that are hurting.
Thank you. Any other public comment about the JAG grant itself? Let's call the question. I'm, call the roll.
Close that.
Oh, that's right. We have to, first, I'm supposed to ask for council comments, and if there aren't any of those, then I declare the public hearing is closed at 6:19 PM. And, and we need a motion to?
Move to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Roll, call the roll on that one, please.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weirin?
Yes.[1725.36]
Very good. Carrie. On to Item J, ordinances. Would you read the first one, please?
Ordinance to amend the number of handicap parking spaces. This is adding a handicap parking space in front of the House of Compassion, 210 West Church Street. First reading.
I move for approval, Your Honor.
Second, Your Honor.
Any discussion? It was my pleasure to meet March Runner, who is now the Director at, at the House of Compassion. She's an attorney authorized to practice up in Alaska and has offered her services to help us with the FEMA things because she's had a lot of experience with it. I'm sure if anybody has any questions about it, we could ask her to the microphone. But if, if we're ready to vote and there's no public comment about it, let's go on to?
Oh, just quickly, I'd like to also offer to waive the, to amend and waive the third, second, and third readings.
Is there a second to that amendment?
Second.
Let's vote on the amendment first.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom? Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weir?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Very good. The, the second and third hearings are waived, and let's vote now. They have a roll call on the ordinance itself.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weir?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Carrie. Very good. Thank you, March, for the work you do there. Would you read the second ordinance?
Ordinance amending Chapter Seven Buildings and Building Regulations, Article Three Dangerous Buildings of the Code of, Code of Ordinances of the City of Marshall Town.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I'll just say that we're not recommending any waiving of any readings on this one. This is to add in a few definitions to what is a dangerous building and to greatly assist in making the process less administratively burdensome. The, I was going to say, the actual ordinance as it is, we did put in the debris management plan because we were required to put that in there. And so, if you were able to look at that and compare to this, it's a completely rewritten ordinance in what is before you tonight.
Any? Question. Would this, is this going to speed up our process to get some of these houses tore down?
It, it could. Yes, it definitely could. There were some requirements in the other one that were, some major administrative burdens that were, were placed on us in terms of recording things and with the recorder's office. And so, this, this really makes it a straight, more of a straightforward process.
You already had a list of houses that we were going to take down this year?
Yes.
That process is going ahead?
Yes.
So, we can expect that when?
I was going to say, I'll have that provided to you in a weekly report update at the, at this point. So, I don't know that we have an actual timeline on that at this point. Nothing's been put out to bid yet.
Okay.
Other questions or comments or public comment?
With the new process, what would be the expected timeframe from start to finish?
Well, I was going to say, it depends on whether or not we're working with an owner who is trying to make repairs or somebody who has completely abandoned a property. And so, I think there's, it would be easy to say that we're still looking at probably at least a three-month timeframe on those that are not responsive at all. It really probably depends too on who all has to be served as part of that because we do have to provide service of notice on this. And so, it depends on how long that process would take. So, it's really hard to put a timeframe on things when, when that is a necessary step in, in the process. Thank you.
Other counselors? Yes, sir.
Could we possibly get a list of all the city-owned properties and define the damage to each one of them and define how much the insurance company is willing to pay and how much, so we know how much we're going to be saddled with?
When, when I have that information, I will share it with you, but I don't have that information at this point in time.
We don't have a list of all of our properties and that were damaged?
Yeah, yes, we do have that, but most of them are still in the insurance review process. And so, I don't have that information. But, I can have Diana send to you a spreadsheet that we've used to work off of, of what properties with our schedule numbers and everything that we've used to work with the insurance company. And so, she can send that to you.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Okay. If there aren't any other counselor questions or comments, time for public comment.
Mark Eaton, 1007 South 10th Avenue. I'm just questioning 731 E. It says that a wall can lean two degrees, but it doesn't say how tall the wall is. So, an eight-foot wall leaning two degrees can lean three and three-eighths inches. A 60-foot-high wall can lean two feet out at the top. And I'm concerned about that. It's, it's actually less stringent than the code that exists today. The code that exists today will, talks about the center of gravity of the wall and will actually restrict the lean to about half a degree versus two degrees on an eight-foot wall. So, I'm just pointing out that this might be something you want to look at.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Roll call, please.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weir?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Very good. That carried as well. Now, we're on to Item K, which is public comment. I don't believe anybody came in after I read the same exact admonition I'm supposed to read now, so I'm not going to read it again.
It is different, by the way.
Oh, it is?
Yes, it is. Especially the last sentence.
Okay. I should read the last sentence then. "The mayor and councilor shall not engage in discussion or debate on items raised by members of the public, and no action may be taken on items raised in public comments in order to comply with the open meetings laws." And you still have to state your name and address and keep it to three minutes.
Your Honor?
Yes, sir. I, I like his comment, and I think maybe we ought to take a look at, somebody ought to review that. We have a couple structural engineers already under our employment looking at buildings. Talk to them and have them take a look at that two-degree thing and see if we need to, to put some limits on, on heights. That does sound a little, maybe just a little far out.
I, I can do that, but just so you know, that that was a whole revision that did go through Lynch Dallas and was legally reviewed and was made to match other codes and other language that was out there. And so, it's not like something that I just pulled out of the air.
No, no, I, I know that. But, I think, I, his comment's really good, and I think, I think we need, since we have structural engineers working for us right now, we can just kind of sit down with them and throw that out there just, just for a review.
Okay. And I assume that Justin was taking note and would follow through on it?
My name is Linda Clark. I live at 306 South Second Avenue, and I agree, we have all worked really well working together. And I want to, hope that everybody's going to continue to do this. There are a lot of people that have a lot of stress. And I read the language in the ordinance for changing, and I have some concern with that. There are persons that, you know, will be approached, that they're going to have to be making decisions on what they're doing. And I'm concerned about what the city will be doing with the city-owned buildings, just like Mr. Lamer said. You know, when it's given, you know, you have 10 days to do something. I was reading all the language that's in that, that ordinance that you're changing and making it the public official to make the determination whether something is going to pass or not pass. I have concern with that. And I think people have had an awful lot of stress in a lot of area, that sometimes I think we might be working a little too fast on things, and maybe some of these things should be slowed down a little bit. It's the only thing I'd like to add.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Good evening. Lee Bottor, 401 Orchard Drive. This past weekend, it was mentioned that we had the Marshall Town Strong Family Benefit to raise funds, and Chief Tepper participated in that, and I think we all had a lot of fun doing that. The dollars raised are being given to Michael with a request of 100% of the funds going to the families. I echo Councilman Weir's comments. It's been phenomenal to see this community come together with a lot of volunteer activity. And those guys need a huge thank you. The volunteers that put this together, they gave generously of their time and their efforts just to help those that are suffering. They've worked side by side with the dream team. I'm going to make you stand up. Stand up. Jake's part of our, part of our dream team. The dream team has literally put, I don't know how many thousands of hours you guys have worked.
I personally, or not personally, but my team, if you put under me, I am the leader of the squad. I do have 937 hours clocked. We've also spent almost near $10,000 of money, the majority of that coming from myself, but we have had two or three other members that have generously given to fill gas tanks. We've bought new chainsaws. I've even went as far as renting equipment that I don't own. So, I, I thank you for interest on that.
Yeah. These guys need a thank you.
For the TV audience, that was 937 hours by Jake's team.
It is phenomenal in what they've done. Not only have these guys done that, but they've also worked side by side with this weekend's event, putting together lots of creative ideas on just helping people that are in Ward One and Ward Two, which is where that major impact is, as you guys know. I'm really proud to say I'm making some new friendships. So, I apologize that I've gone over three minutes here a little bit, okay? I know the documents here are a little bit on the dangerous building ordinances. I realize that we're working on the FEMA declaration. I'm part of that long-term recovery team that's been put together to address those issues. My question, I guess, would be to housing, okay? We've got folks out there that are what I call couch surfing right now, or they're in hotels that are, you know, overbooked, et cetera. We are eight weeks out from winter. As a city, as a human being, what are we going to do to help our friends and neighbors? That's a question that I need to, I need to pose. I've seen snow on Halloween. How many of you guys seen ice storms? Okay. I don't want my friends and neighbors in Ward One and Ward Two having to continue to couch surf or, oh, my gosh, where am I going to stay? There have been reports of people in tents sleeping in their yards. Jake would better be able to address that and know those stories. I, I don't know all the stories, but he does.
Jacob Rowley, 910 East South Street. Yeah, I can speak on just a couple. There's one that really sticks out in my head big time. His, this, their address was 309 Bromley Street. Name is Anthony Banderas. They were completely displaced from their home. Their roof was removed. We took our squad in the first day to try to help them move their belongings to try to at least get some of that stuff put in a storage unit so that they could save some of their belongings. The first day, we got all the clothing, stuff like that out. They called us about three days later and said, hey, we've got some rain coming. We're worried about our furniture, et cetera. We got that out. They were in a, they were in a hotel for, I think, 27 days, and then the insurance company finally cut that off. I offered my home for them for a short period of time. They actually, in the process of finding that, did go ahead and find an apartment to rent. And so, they have been replaced now. But, they're just one of hundreds of stories, and especially down in the, in the lower-income area. I mean, we, we really do have to realize that, you know, some of these people that, that were on this other side of, you know, basically, I want to say west side of Third Avenue, they had good insurance. They have the extra 500 bucks in their pocket to be able to maybe, you know, incur some extra expenses. But, we have people down there that are renters, and their landlords aren't doing what they're supposed to be doing. We have people that they are not, they, they're just not in the position to take this kind of a hit. And I think we really do need to see where, how we can help those people. I understand money's tight. It's a, you know, it's a city organization. I understand that. It goes back to what Anna talked about tonight. I think, you know, if we, if we do have $55,000 to spend on artwork, I feel like that's money that could be better placed somewhere else. I understand that that's already been set aside for a police station fund, and so, on top of that, we can't necessarily just pull out of that. But, I, I do think that it, as a city, it's kind of a slap in the face to spend that kind of money on something like that if we're not going to help the people that really, really need it right now. Like I said, we've, we've done the majority that we can at this point. And at this point, if there's a request for help, I'm, I'm answering it. But, you know, also, I do have a business to run as well, and I, and I can't do it all. So, I just ask that we do look at that area, help them as much as we possibly can. So, there's many stories like that, but that's just one that really sticks out. I mean, this was a guy that had five kids living in one house. And at this point, we do have them replaced, but they're one of many. So.
Thanks for your input and for your volunteering.
Thank you.
In finishing, one of the things I know the questions have been coming up a lot is, why hasn't FEMA came in? Okay. Is there a checklist, so to speak, a simple one, a very simple checklist that we have to go through on, this is what it takes to qualify for FEMA, that can be put out on the city website, that can be put out on the tornado assistance? So, if there's anything that we can do, just something simplistic to say, this is why we haven't qualified. The other thing, there's things that are being worked on, wanting to do blessing boxes, which are like little libraries, graffiti wall. We've talked about the blanket drive, the clothing drive, furniture drives. We're working on a book. So, with Val Ralph, this would be something we could work on. Beverly Free has been out doing lots and lots of interviews, and she's going to put that into actual writing. We're not sure the name of the book, but we're thinking winds of change because we're in a landscape. We all know that. And finally, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to give you a challenge. Okay, I'm know, I'm not supposed to address you directly, but recently, on one of the social posts, you did encourage the citizens impacted to write President Trump to speed things along for FEMA declaration. I know that you've done that with our legislators. The challenge that I would have is, please, let's take the stories that are on the social media. Please take the dream team. Take a, I'm going to call it the Santa Claus pack of letters into Trump, into our president. Take the dream team with you. If they'll go, you have access to a plane. You're a pilot. Would you please fly in and take those letters in? Because I think it'll have a lot more impact being delivered from the mayor that loves the city and from people that love their city. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Seeing no one rising, let's dispense with the public comment section. And now, we go into the closed session relating to pending litigation. And so, the closed session will be pursuant to Section 21.5, Subsection 1, Paragraph C of the Code of Iowa, to discuss strategy with council in matters where litigation is imminent, where its disclosure would likely prejudice or disadvantage the city in that litigation. The city has an attorney-client relationship with Attorney Roger Schell, appointed as our city attorney and by Council Resolution 2014-047, and with Lynch Dallas PC by Council Resolution 2017-093, approved on May 8 of 2017.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weir?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Okay. We're in closed session as of 6:38.
Closed session.
We'll come out and do actions and then go back in.
All right.
Yeah, because they're two different purposes.
All right. Thank you.